Good evening, for those who are in attendance and those who are joining us virtually on Zoom. We welcome you to the special joint meeting of the Glendora City Council and the Glendora Unified School District. As you will hear later this evening in the presentation, tonight's meeting is a continuation of the longstanding working relationship that exists between the city of Glendora and the Glendora Unified School District. We have worked cooperatively for more than half a century and probably only a few of us have been part of that conversation. Just teasing my colleague down at the end. So tonight is in some ways historic, having the opportunity for both boards to be able to get together. Oftentimes when we meet, it's only a few of us at a time. So tonight is a historic opportunity to have both of us together, being able to discuss these issues that are of significance to both the city and the school district. Our focus this evening will be on a proposed master joint agreement and to have the opportunity to clean up and modernize language in those agreements. Over those fifty-plus years, many of the agreements have been verbal handshakes. And so over the last ten years or so, we've been trying to formalize some of those agreements and have it so that everyone knows what is going on and it can be of benefit to both the city, the school district, and the many users of our facilities that we share. So tonight, we will be discussing the use of the sports fields, the facilities, the school resource officer program, the crossing guard program, and the library. It's important to underscore that this is part of an ongoing conversation. We hope that this will continue to be a way in which we can formalize some of these agreements and have input from the community that uses those facilities. Invite you to fill out a speaker card. There are three opportunities for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end of the meeting. You'll have an opportunity to speak at one of those. And also, we invite you to speak on those items that are on the agenda. That is what the public comment tonight is for. And those who are joining us on Zoom, when public comment begins, we invite you to use the raise hand icon and then you will be recognized at the appropriate time. So again, tonight, we thank you for being here. We thank you for your participation and thank you in advance for your respect during this meeting as we all work together. With that, I will formally call this meeting to order. All five city council members are present. And with that, I will invite school board president Merkley to call the school board.
I call the Glendora Unified School Board meeting in order six oh three and all board members are present.
And with that, I will invite Mr. Dominic de Grazia to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if you're able, please stand and join us in the pledge. Thank you, Mr. de Grazia. That takes us to our first public comment time. Excuse me, before we do that, we will have the school board adopt the agenda.
Please have a motion to adopt the agenda. Don't move. Thank you, Ms. Borg. Thank you, Dr. Fernando. Sorry. All in favor? All opposed? It's adopted.
Thank you. Now with that behind us, we will move on to our first public comment time. Again, if you wish to speak, invite you to fill out a speaker card and turn that into our city clerk. And then those joining us on Zoom invite you to use the raise hand icon. At this time, I will call Shawna Elias to please come forward and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Shawna Elias. My original purpose for being here tonight was to hear about the partnership between our school district and the city. But I'd actually like to address something that I feel is much more important. In a notice that went out to parents this week, the results of the first academic assessments administered following the pandemic were shared with the community. For those who aren't aware, according to these results, only sixty-one percent of Glendora students met the standards in English Language Arts and only forty-nine percent of our students, less than half, met the standards in math. While it's worth noting that Glendora students outperformed state and county averages, the percentage of our students who meet the standards in ELA and math has fallen seven percent and almost ten percent respectively since before COVID. These numbers are shocking. And although I am proud of the collective perseverance of our student body and the incredible dedication of our teachers, I'm utterly disappointed and frankly angry at this board for your complete lack of leadership during the pandemic. For months, parents and community members pleaded with this board to get our kids back into the classroom. We begged you to do more to reopen our schools fearing that our kids would fall behind, both academically and socially. We implored you to stand up for our kids and we were told over and over that your hands were tied. You failed to act and now these test results show our worst fears have in fact materialized. These are not faceless statistics. These are our kids. These are the children whose best interest you are elected to consider and you failed them. You are here tonight at this special joint session, an unprecedented meeting, to essentially address the fact that you couldn't keep the bathrooms open during soccer season. Where were the special joint sessions two years ago to address the fact that our kids were stuck at home, isolated from their peers, facing depression and learning loss? Or the joint session to discuss the impacts of forcing our kids to stand on dots six feet apart and wear face masks outdoors in the ninety-degree heat while they did PE? I am angry that you found it important enough to convene this session tonight, but not when the welfare of our students was at stake. This district can attempt to sugarcoat the results by focusing on the fact that Glendora students performed better than the abysmal averages across California, but Glendora knows better. Your failed leadership has long-lasting effects for our kids. I am running for a seat on this board because parents in Glendora deserve accountability and we deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to remind the speakers tonight, please keep your comments directed at what's on our agenda tonight. With that, I would like to call on John Kachariski.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Kachariski. I'm a resident here in the city of Glendora. I'm the president from Glendora American League. And I'm just here to speak on behalf of Glendora American League. I just want to thank everybody that's here because we're all here for our community as you all are here because of the sacrifice that we're all doing here together. And I believe, I firmly believe that the pride of the foothills is something we're lacking right now in Glendora. So on behalf of the Glendora American League, I really wanted to say we're a great community that has just been out there sacrificing and really putting a lot of good work into the fields. So I'm so happy right now that this is happening right now. Because I think what we're lacking right now is this communication. And sometimes a little bit what we need is communication with, you know, Eli understands right here, he's a Glendora National League president. And sometimes I think we lack in navigating through just getting to what we need to get done. And sometimes, and Eli would attest that we have too many obstacles out there. And sometimes we feel that we have to put an obstacle instead of showing somebody the way to get to where we need to get to. And at the end, that's what we're here for, right? We're here to make our community better. Simple as that. We're all here sacrificing our time and our efforts, leaving our families aside and being out here for however long this meeting might be, but because there's an issue and the issue needs to be addressed. So on behalf of just Glendora American League and every entire board, I'm just very thankful to be part of this community. And all we want is support. I think we just need to support each other. Support each other and be able to navigate through everything, the simple things, taking out the trash. You know, I know we're in this, I know I've spoken to John Aguirre of what field belongs to who and who does this? And the last lady just spoke, she said, you know, the restrooms, this has been an issue. We have our own bathroom that we have to service as a nonprofit, which I think, you know, I think the city should take a little part, or the school district, or whoever it might be. But it shouldn't take the volunteers to have to be out there scrubbing toilets after all the sacrifices that they're already putting into into the league. And I think it's a little bit silly, to say the least. But, and in regards to where I'm getting texts from our school district saying, hey, why aren't the trash taken now? It's like, man, this is summer. It's all-star season. And here I am having to take out the trash for the public. But I know I'm getting short. It's, I don't know, my time is almost up. But I think we just all need to be accountable for a lot of things and really just work together to get things done. So thank you for your time. I apologize. I wouldn't mind if I went over, but we always just remember, you know, it's pride of the foothills. You know, we have a great community and the reason why we're here is because we want to make our community better. I appreciate you guys. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak at the first public comment time? Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak? If so, please use the raise hand icon.
Give public comment.
Okay, thank you. Then we will close the public comment time. And before we go to our presentation, I'll make two important announcements. The restrooms are straight down that hall through that back door. If you need to leave early tonight, we ask that you please exit through the door on my left, your right. So just two important announcements to make you aware of. With that, I will take us to our special item discussion between the Glendora City Council and the Glendora Unified School District Board of Education. Tonight, we will discuss the historical view of our partnership between the city of Glendora and the Glendora Unified School District, proposed master joint agreement between the city of Glendora and the Glendora Unified School District, opportunity areas, and the future of the partnership. And to tell us about all of these fabulous things is the amazing, incredible Assistant City Manager, Moises Lopez. Take it away, Mr. Lopez.
That's quite the introduction, hopefully. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Madam President, members of the board. The presentation is actually going to be a tag team effort. I'm going to start with the historical account and then I will transition it over to Ms. Bakar, who will discuss the proposed framework language moving forward. So we'll jump right in. Next slide, please. The city and school district have had a longstanding relationship, as the mayor mentioned, that has covered several areas of collaboration over the last half century, a little more than half century, about sixty years, actually. We've entered into nine separate agreements over that timeframe. I found another two that were in draft form that never got completed. And that doesn't account for the countless phone calls, emails, or trying to figure out how coverage works on the weekends. A byproduct of conversations amongst all of you or amongst us at the staff level. So I'll get into these agreements in a little bit more detail over the next couple of slides. The first of the agreements was actually signed in nineteen sixty-two. It was an agreement between the city and GUSD to formalize and broadly facilitate access by the community to GUSD facilities. It was created for the express purpose of promoting recreation programs and activities and included language that authorized development and improvement of certain facilities as well as maintenance obligations on the part of the city and school district. It was broadened that it encompassed not just sports fields, but it included buildings, almost all of the grounds of the schools, playfields, as well as the pool. Next slide. A few years later, in two thousand and one, we signed an agreement on that governed the use of the aquatic center. The city made a contribution to that project and the pool was made available to the city for its use for a defined number of hours every year. To date, the city primarily uses that facility in the summer for its swimming program and it's overseen in partnership with our community services department and school district. Shared costs for maintenance and operation as well as for capital improvements are specifically outlined in the agreement. This is an area that we recognize we need to work on to facilitate some improvements to that particular facility that is in need of that repair. Next slide. In that same year, we signed an agreement for the multipurpose event center. Similar to the aquatic center, it was to be made available to the community. GUSD takes the lead in scheduling that facility. And we know that there is a substantial amount of use on the school district's facility, so that limits the community's access to it. But generally speaking, users of the facility are responsible to pay the cost of operating that facility for that defined period of time. Next slide, please. In two thousand and thirteen, this was the first attempt at comprehensively updating the joint use agreement between the city and school district. It incorporated the multipurpose event center agreement, the agreement for the aquatic center, some fields and facilities. It included the tennis courts at the high school as well as access to the crowther teen center. Specific maintenance obligations for both agencies were outlined in the agreement as were shared cost obligations for capital improvements, things that were referenced by members of the community, including restrooms, litter removal, as well as improvements and maintenance operations to that facility. If you look at that agreement, particularly as it relates to George Minutian Park and Sandberg Middle School Park, it got very specific, quite literally, we defined amongst the school district and city which patch of grass we were responsible for watering, which one of us was responsible for mowing, which one of us was responsible for lining the fields. Some of the properties owned by the city, some of the properties owned by the school district, and there are places in which that line isn't necessarily clear, clearly defined as it relates to the fields of use. And so there's a lot of exhibits that complicate some of the administration of the maintenance and operations of that, of those particular campuses. Next slide, please. In two thousand and thirteen, the city entered an agreement with the American Little League. It obligated the Little League to certain specific responsibilities for the field that's adjacent to Goddard Middle School at Minutian Park. The city was responsible for road maintenance, sweeping of the parking lots as well as trash pickup. And in two thousand and eighteen, we attempted to work on an extension, but unfortunately that agreement was not completed. At that point, the initial agreement was only between the city and the Little League. And we were planning to incorporate the school district as well as part of that extension, but unfortunately, that did not happen. It is actually a good model for what is contemplated under the proposed framework. And as the gentleman who spoke relative to the American Little League, I think that we are attempting to accomplish that as part of our future more clean and direct agreement between the city and the school district and hopefully agreements with all of the sports leagues that are operating on our campus. I will note, I'm highlighting the American Little League specifically because we had an agreement with them. There were some questions that we received over the course of the last week as to why we're not highlighting the National Little League. The best of my ability to research, I did not find an agreement between the city and National Little League, but it is something that we would be certainly open to in the not-too-distant future. Next slide, please. This is probably the most interesting of the agreements between the city and school district. In a joint venture between our two agencies, we created the Glendora Library Authority. At that time, the Library Authority was a joint venture to construct a public library to provide necessary library services for our community. And we were given authority through that construct to acquire sites, to construct, to maintain, operate, and lease public library buildings and related facilities. The major benefits of that project were outlined specifically in the agreement. And just for everyone's information, at the time the agreement was signed, it was projected that GUSD alone would have an enrollment of more than twenty-one thousand students. Enrollment in nineteen seventy was just over nine thousand students. And we estimated, the city estimated that about fifty percent of the library's patrons at that time were students. That library that that authority was built for is the one we're sitting in right now. The term of that agreement expired when we paid off all of the outstanding bonds that were issued to construct this particular facility. And at the time, we built it because we wanted to build or keep what was considered a very large record disc collection, an emerging cassette tape collection, as well as various rooms for typewriters and study areas. Next slide, please. Our relationship, the city and school district, has evolved a little bit over the years. And so we currently have an agreement in place to provide some professional library services. We've entered in that to be able to advise GUSD on the selection and ordering of library books. It's a very limited and defined agreement. We're capped at the number of hours that library staff can provide support to the school district on a quarterly basis. But it's an agreement nonetheless that extends and emanates from that first original agreement in nineteen seventy. Glendora Library Authority. School Resource Officer Program was created in two thousand and six. One officer, full-time officer, was agreed to at that particular time. Although over in recent years, we've increased that number by a half FTE. So our School Resource Officer Program has patrolled Glendora High School as well as the two middle schools or community. GUSD provides a cost sharing, the agreement provides for a cost sharing agreement with GUSD for fifty percent of the actual cost incurred by the city during that eleven-month period for one sworn officer. That officer is involved, those officers have been involved in all sorts of GUSD-related activities over the last couple of years. And it's something that we work to address and as well as other issues that pop up over the course of the year that we work to address involving GUSD students. Next slide, please. Crossing Guard Program, this is probably one of the more longer-standing subsequent agreements that we've had with the school district. Prior to two thousand and eleven, the city actually staffed fifteen part-time employees under the jurisdiction of the Police Department's Traffic Bureau. Six crossing guards were provided at sixteen different locations for the city. Fourteen of them were within the service area of GUSD. At that particular time, the total annual cost was just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and both school districts actually contributed to that particular program. Bit of a nuance in the cost sharing agreement in that GUSD was responsible for paying fifty percent of the cost of seven locations. The city would pick up the cost of the remaining seven locations within jurisdictional boundary. I would also like to highlight that the agreement also covers Charter of Unified School District. Next slide, please. In two thousand and eleven, the city entered into an agreement with all city management services to provide crossing guard at fourteen total locations. Twelve of those locations are within GUSD's service area. The two locations that dropped off as part of that agreement were dropped off after an assessment by the police department. The initial term of that agreement was for four years, starting in two thousand and eleven. It was subsequently extended for another four years in two thousand and fifteen. And if we move on to the next slide, we've since extended it yet again with all city management services who are continuing to provide that service for the city. The similar cost-sharing arrangement that I shared with you previously has remained intact. But roughly, both of the school districts are responsible for about twenty-five percent of the total cost of that contract. Currently, our total not-to-exceed cost for that contract is just over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We are projecting that that cost will continue to increase as, as like everything else. And it fluctuates based on the number of hours that we request for service, the location, the number of locations, as well as wages for. Next slide, please. With that, I will transition it over to Ms. Bakar.
Thank you to our speakers here this evening and for sharing your thoughts with us. I've been here for just over a year and in working with many of our youth groups. We know there's some challenges and we definitely want to be good partners to you because of the services that you provide to our students and our youth. Looking at some future collaboration, we are looking at a proposed master joint agreement framework. In that framework, we were looking at ways to be collaborative within our agreement and incorporate some of the other, most of all, the other existing agreements, although sometimes there is some differential languages in them as you go through the different iterations or through some of those elements. Cell terms, we think it's important to be able to really spell things out and be really clear and transparent. Looking at some of the big topic areas, we'd be looking at sports fields and facilities, our school resource officers, and support from our police department, crossing guards, and library service. For the future collaborations that we see would include our sports facilities and fields, we would like to see the city would probably be assuming those coordinating responsibilities with our local sports leagues that occur on the fields. It would also include a shared maintenance. It also included shared maintenance costs of the sports fields and facilities and pursue opportunities to fund necessary capital improvements. And we think that's an important element. There's a lot of grants out there. And in collaboration, we would probably be able to go after some of those grants to be able to provide better services to the youth in our community and most importantly, to the maintenance of our fields. Develop and implement a common fee to help offset these maintenance costs and develop and implement a standard of an agreement with our local sports leagues. For future collaboration, we would be looking at our school resource officers and sharing within that cost. And we would also consult regularly to determine if additional resources are needed to support GUSD and other related activities that occur related to our students. And then looking at crossing guards, we would also want to share in the crossing guard costs within our district boundaries. For the library, no changes to this proposed section is right now to the terms of the existing agreement are being recommended.
All right, very good. Thank you to both of you for that presentation. I'll bring it back to the council and the school board for questions and comments. Mayor Proten.
Number of questions, and we've talked about some of them, but you know, as, as we move forward with this, is there a plan to update all of the agreements or are we going to take a look at agreements that are still currently valid? And just continue what we currently have in the books or is the conversation about making changes to those as well?
I, I would say it's actually both. As an example, the library services agreement is fine in its current condition. It's a relatively modern agreement. There are agreements that, as Ms. Park mentioned, have used different language in terms of maintenance obligations or capital improvement obligations. Some just say shared, some say proportional to use. And so we want to reconcile those differences so that we've got clarity across all of those agreements.
Going on to some of the different things, as you talk, when you were talking about the safety issues and the crossing guard and the SRO. There are other relationships between PD and the school district as far as when officers go into, you know, presentations at the school or participate in school functions and things like that. How does that work? I mean, is that, is that just our officers going in and doing that? Or is there actually a cost to the schools for having them participate in those things?
It depends on the services and also what the scheduling is happening. If it's something that's related to additional resources that are needed. In the past, I believe the city actually has picked up the majority of that bill. It has not been the school district. Look at if we're needing extra officers for an event, it's something that we may need to take a look at that. Also, there's other things that we can do as well. Services that might be just as effective depending on what the situation. Either way, we want to be able to consult with GPD for that, the services that we would be suggesting are in line with what they would want.
And as far as, again, talking about the police department. The police department collaborating with the school district, let's, let's face it today, you know, safety is a major issue when it comes to school campuses. I think about things like, and we were talking about something as simple as if, if a police officer were called into the schools on a, on an emergency basis. Do they know the outlines or the, the floor plans of the schools and, and the different doors where, what door leads to what location and things like? That's something that we're working together on plans for?
Yes, and the police department in collaboration with the district in the past has gone through all of our campuses, trained on our campuses, have, have specific maps and keys to our campuses access. And in addition to that, in our February Professional Development Day upcoming, two thousand twenty-three, we plan to coordinate and collaborate with Glendora Police Department, provide some information to all staff in regards to tactical response and support staff, students, community on campus.
You know, as, as we're working through these, I know you and Tracy have been carrying the bulk of the load. But I would assume that like Janet has been involved in the conversations at the library and Matt with, with John with field maintenance and things. Are, are we dealing with similar representatives from the school district or is, you know, and honestly, I embarrassed, I don't know this, but I, is there somebody that is the director of the field maintenance at the schools? Have people know similar positions and are they part of this conversation?
We do, and they have been part of this conversation. I do have a chief of facilities and maintenance operations. He's very well aware of this. His crews have worked with us some of the things that have to happen in order to be able to prepare maybe even fix, you know, the sprinklers and things that need to happen. And then we've been working this past year very closely together on trying to come up with better resolutions to be able to provide better services for our youth groups. More work yet to be done.
Is there a safety officer that's employed by the school?
We have security campus aides that are on our campuses. And then we also have the SRO, which is primarily at the high school and our middle schools.
Okay.
Can I make a real quick request? Can you talk a little closer to the mics? We're not getting enough sound on the.
How is this?
Perfect.
Okay.
W G A R. Okay, let me go through here. Okay, we, we talked in the outline of this as to, as we move forward, we want to continue to have quarterly meetings on a regular basis to discuss some of these agreements. Are we thinking about those meetings replacing and, and for the audience, we traditionally two city council members and the city manager meets with two school board members and the superintendent on a regular basis, normally about four times a year, just to talk about what's going on at the school district and the city and how we can collaborate. And are we talking about having meetings specific to the facility's use in these agreements over and above the regular meetings that we have?
Yes. So the two plus two meetings would continue in their current format. We contemplate having separate meetings to talk about facility use and field use. We actually already have some meetings that occur with our community services staff and some of the sports leagues. So we want to continue those meeting or platforms to have those discussions and incorporate the school district in those conversations more regularly.
Being colorblind, you can't tell if the light's on or off. So good evening, everyone. Really quick on the construct of the agreement. Specific to your question and how it sort of ties in for some of the items moving forward. The goal is to have sort of an outline, a master agreement where a lot of the things that we're talking about, the library services become exhibit A, the SRO becomes exhibit B. So when we meet quarterly, we're reviewing each individual component of the main agreement. And we could add new ones like priorities with the state and feds, for example, if that comes up. So in that framework, it allows us a more itemized approach when we meet quarterly. Quite frankly, as, as you've seen, we've had some changeover in staff, especially with the past in my tenure over four years. And so we haven't been able to have those same staff sitting down constantly. But one of the things that's come up, especially with field maintenance, is the city and school district have more similarities than, than not. We continue to have some of the same challenges, the sports leagues and those users get upset at us for the same reason. So I think the more frequent meetings will be very helpful on all accounts.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, there, there's also a comment on here about the city and the school district, like indemnify each other. But is there conversation in this agreement as to who is the responsible party on different issues? I mean, is that going to be spelled out? We know we had a conflict a few years ago and, and it was unknown as to who exactly was responsible for what. Is that going to be spelled out? Are we going to have some sort of a joint agreement that we will work together on things when there's questions?
I think we would like to transition to a place where it, we don't get to a place where this side of the line is yours, this side of the line is mine, and then good luck. I think because we're working on this jointly, that we'll have a much broader collaborative effort so that we mutually indemnify regardless of what property your field is being in use so that we're both addressing that particular situation together.
Is there any type of opportunity that we could have a a, a joint insurance policy? That, that could maybe cover both the district and the, the city?
As it relates to potential sports leagues and things like that, we usually have the sports leagues indemnify both agencies as well. However, that said, definitely something we can look at. I'm, I'm not aware of blanket for two different legal entities like that, but definitely something we can explore.
Okay.
The specific government code language that governs joint indemnity between public agencies that will typically get included in an agreement like this.
Okay, and then, you know, we, we talked about, you know, the, the joint use facilities of the fields and things. And then something that somebody asked me about last night that I brought up when I was talking to Moisette a little while ago is that we need to make sure we incorporate the snack bars in these conversations moving forward. I know as a longtime Little League parent and coach and board member that, you know, we sometimes believe we own the snack bars. But it's important that there is an understanding as to who's responsible for what, just like we talked about in the maintenance of the bathrooms and things like that. So I just want to make sure that that gets included as we continue the conversation forward. We had talked about, oh, you know, on the outline that was spelled out, one of the things that I noticed on there is Sutherland School isn't noted. And for the audience, a lot of people may not know Sutherland School, it's in the Glendora Unified School District, but it's actually sits in the city of San Dimas. So that school, the entirety of that school is in San Dimas. So as far as any kind of agreements, Sutherland School, we really wouldn't be able to participate in anything there. Is, is that a correct statement or is there a possibility?
You want me to handle that?
I do.
I think that's a conversation that we could have with the school district. It's still their campus facility. So the agreement that we would enter with the school district would govern that facility if we were to include it. As a matter of courtesy, we would reach out to the city of San Dimas and let them know that such an agreement is taking place.
And just for my own information, something happens on Sutherland Campus, do they call GPD or do they?
I think the chiefs back there, it depends where the call comes in from too. Chief, if you wouldn't mind sort of breaking that down for us?
Evening, everyone. Matt Egan, Police Chief Glendora. Is that good? All right. The answer is it depends. Just like Mr. Raymond described, based on the severity of the call, the circumstances, whether it's tied to another location, oftentimes when we're dispatched to a call, there's a connection to a home that's in Glendora. We will, of course, handle that because it will, it will, in any event, land us back at a particular person's home. There are some circumstances, though, that the sheriff's department will handle those calls on that footprint. You know, trespassing, middle-of-the-night kind of things, frivolity of kids doing things they shouldn't be, you know, two o'clock in the morning on, on the campus. But for more serious offenses and there's a really good nexus to a Glendora address, we would handle that. Does that answer?
No, actually, I'd made it more confusing.
Sorry. It depends.
Be- because that, that address, it's, it's a Glendora address, it's a nine-one-seven-four-oh zip code, but it legally is in the city of San Dimas.
Correct.
So, and again, I'm don't know the, the workings of all of this, but somebody that was nine-one-one from Sutherland School from a landline, where does that call go?
LA County Sheriff's Department.
Okay. And then they would include you?
No.
Or they wouldn't? They would be the ones responding?
They would be the ones responding.
So other calls that came in, if somebody was calling and saying something was happening at the school, that would depend on where that call came from?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, now makes sense.
Yeah. And if we hear about a call, we're going to go.
Yep.
And then we'll sort it out once it's stabilized.
Okay, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Also on here, I'm taking a look. Okay. A- as we outlined, the school facilities, we don't have Williams on here. And Williams was used for a long time for both Little League practice and for soccer practice. And that got moved over to Stanton. And I would just like to make sure that there's conversation about possibly bringing Williams back into this umbrella?
And there may not be, and here's why. Williams is our, our licensed preschool, and we actually have different regulations as we provide after-hour care. And so allowing the public on that campus without finding other ways, decaying to separate them from our littles that are over there and ensure that our licensing is, is correctly followed by all the policies, by all the regulatory agencies that oversee those types of programs. Right now, that is a facility that is not currently open for reservations.
Okay, good, good to know. I didn't know that. On, on the pool at the high school. So right now, on a regular basis, does the city pay half of the maintenance cost on that on an annual basis?
Our maintenance obligations, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, is proportional to our use of the facility.
Okay, so if we use it twenty percent of the time and there's a maintenance issue, we pay for twenty percent of the cost?
That would be correct.
And to answer your question a little more specifically, historically, it has not been some years, yes, some years, no. It's one of the areas we've known that there's some significant capital improvements that need to be made. So the city has put money away in CIP reserve, knowing an obligation is going to come at some point. But historically, the city and school district have not followed the terms of that agreement precisely, just like a lot of the elements here, as time's gone on, a lot of handshake agreements. But a lot of the time, it was because money was tight in one area or the other. So the city just agreed to pick up costs in one area and the school district would pick up costs another, and we would just call it even. So in the world of transparency and lots of questions, and all of us will be replaced at one time around this table, we want to make sure that the effort we're undertaking is, is clear. And we have a once a year sort of going through those, having a reconciliation of who owes what and moving forward. I think that's part of the reasons why we're here.
And then the last question, I promise. Conversation came, or mention of tennis courts. Okay, so that's part of this agreement as well. And I know lighting at the tennis courts has been an issue from time to time. And then we also have the tennis courts at Goddard. Are those also part of that? Or because of the, where they're located at, are they part of that upper level agreement that we already have in place?
The, the most recent agreement where tennis courts are contemplated or included, I should say, are only for the high school tennis courts, not the ones at Goddard.
Okay, so do we know how the tennis courts at Goddard are being maintained right now?
By the district.
By the district.
By the district, okay.
Yeah, and to make matters a little more complicated, in the high school, the city owns the lights.
So the city owns the lights?
Yes.
And your school owns the courts?
Because I'm sure at some point the city didn't want those lights on because it got tired of receiving complaints from the neighborhood, the lights run at night. So they took ownership of those. So that's one of the other areas we're hoping to clarify as part of this as well.
Okay, I, I know this is an ongoing conversation. There's a lot of things and, and I, I just wanted to ask some of the ones that I didn't see that were being covered. I know we're, we're going to talk about other opportunities, so I do have some other things I'd like to bring up, but at this point, for what we talked about so far, those are the only questions I have.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Friedenl.
Thanks, Mr. Boyer. I can go home. Thank you all for being here. I clearly encourage and enjoy the effort to make a continuing partnership. It's, it's valuable. We have a unique thing in the fact that in, in our city, that parks are not separated from school yards. And we residents think it's green, it's cool, it's in a fence, it's a city park. So this partnership is valuable. Looking at and respecting the, you know, some faces here from the Little League groups, the football group. Mr. Boyer alluded to as a volunteer for those. Those volunteers are passionate owners of those, those fields, even though they technically don't own them. They treat them as such and oftentimes maybe better than their own yards. So it's they have some embedded ownership to that that they're very concerned about. I enjoyed the solid plan of, of agreements and making a single plan, simple as Single plan, simple is better in my mind. So I just caution or encourage if we're going to make individual agreements. I'll just pick on them, one for American and one for for national. Hope we would be guarded. Only knowing that, hey, their kids all grow up and those. Those ownerships or those boards. Do rotate as any volunteer service organization does. So we need to make sure that whatever those programs are. Are going to fit for the ongoing duration of our partnership. And not get completely, not be tailored so much for this group. For the faces in the room now. That they don't work for the faces that might come in in a few years, so. I hope that we look at that and uh. And keep that in mind with our fees. That also lets them determine and figure out. Projected fees and costs. So they can sell their program. I also would hope that as we s- look at the scheduling for fields, which is. Quite a a difficult task, I can appreciate. That we do, in fact, give priority to our resident city leagues. To be the users, be in youth leagues or adult leagues. Opposed to the. Travel club or others from outside the city that might come in and want to. Compete for those same properties. I hope we will look at our resident leagues first as a as a first priority.
If I may, I will just share with you, our experience over this past year is that our youth leagues pretty much so consume. The majority of time that's taken up on those fields. Uh, there is not much time left for others to really find time to be on them. We have a robust. Youth group that's out there amongst all of our schools that are using them either for practices, games, um, and they do care about our fields. I do know that.
I would agree and and think that's that's a valuable tool. Um. On a future look, I hope we might be able to come up with a way and. And we did get some definition about the Williams property, but. Many of the school sites. Neighborhood parks, if you will. I I know they're locked gates and they're closed, and I I'm curious as to how people go play soccer on Sunday afternoons and things. I stopped climbing over school fences a long time ago. Um. But, you know, that's a curiosity and it occurs, and I'm sure we're aware of that. Access is made possible, but. Maybe one of those future considerations is, can we come up with a way to. Secure the buildings against vandalism, because that's a big. Realistic concern. And then allow maybe those fields to be more accessible. In the off hours while still protecting the capital assets. That's important. I too would be very disgruntled to walk in and find vandalism. I don't care for that at all, so I'm not a good player in that cart. Crossing guards, I certainly agree and appreciate the split a little more evenly with the fifty fifty program. Driving habits are terrible, so more guards are good and. Maybe bats instead of signs is good too to slow people down, but um. We need to, we need to make sure we have a good crossing guard program and that it maintains itself. I own a yellow jacket and a bat. Thank you very much. Now, I think that slowing cars down is very important. It's. No excuse for ignoring the crossing guards. Beyond that, I have no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alawas.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, quick question here, as does the school have the same accounting of the events in the past that um was presented tonight by Moises?
We've got quite a few of the accounts, and then he was able to identify a few other older ones that we did not have information on. Um, there's a couple of manuals that are quite large that incorporate. Past elements as you read through all those. Uh, notations from the various um. Guardians of of those documents. Um, it's very, very complex, and so I want to think. Uh, Moises, for all of his work that he's done on this, it has been exemplary and um. And help educate me as we sit there and we've we've looked at these together.
I think we'll keep him this week. Um, so why are we here tonight? Simply, um, we have our respective boards. I know that uh. That Gary had mentioned, seven years ago, he's been working on this. I know when I came on board in two thousand and seventeen. We gave an edict to our then city manager with direction to get this done. And then when Adam came on board, we gave an edict to him as well. And, you know, with us up here, we don't get into the weeds, we give policy. And so we give direction. We don't go through and do the negotiations, so it it was assuming. That the two heads on both sides would get together and. Work these issues out, then bring it to the respective boards for the details, agreement or not. So what happened? What fell apart? I'm sorry, I'm gonna be the elephant in the room. What happened? Why are we here?
I don't know that anything necessarily fell apart. I think this is a chance to come back and. Review some of the areas that probably need to be re-agreed upon. Because I think it was said very well by Mr. Raymond. And when he shared that uh there's been kind of some handshake deals along the side. And as I looked at how we were doing some of our expenditures, we weren't necessarily reimbursing you for some things that I think we probably should have been reimbursing you for and vice versa. And um, and as we're looking at that and trying to be good stewards. Of the agreements and the monies and honor those of the past, we felt it was important to come back. And talk about this one more time and really have a good conversation. The things that changed is our world litigation has changed, and so we both have issues. Um, that we have to mitigate when it comes down to liability. And then we also um bring our our youth services onto our onto our public fields. There's also an element there, and so trying to work through all those so that there's clarity and transparency. Reason why we're here today.
So we don't have any agreements in place at the moment, or we have individual little agreements that we think are probably still in effect?
We we have several agreements that are in effect.
But we don't know which one takes precedence or?
Well, well, we do by virtue of time and when they were acted upon, but to Tracy's point. A- as we've evolved and. Dynamics of the sports leagues in our community have changed and our agencies have changed, uh, we've started and stopped. A a few times trying to create a new master agreement, so this is a kind of a new effort to. Incorporate all of these agreements, to have them very clear, to be consistent across the board, and then. Provide us the template to be able to engage our partners in the community a little bit more clearly and transparently.
But again, I'm gonna go back to the same question I have. What are we doing here? Because at the at the end of the day, it's gonna be both. Our side of the bureaucracy on our side and the bureaucracy on the school side to work out these differences, then bring it back to our respective boards and commissions and. And say, do you like this or not, or do you have any issues with any of this? So are we doing here? Because tonight, we're not gonna vote on anything.
Yes and no. So you'll you'll get some update, you'll we'll get feedback from the policymakers on both ends, so sometimes. Let's consider the two boards, mom and dad, and little kid goes back to one and goes back to the other, and sometimes we don't hear a clear message, and so now we have the public that's gonna hear a clear message from both the city council. And the school board. Uh, that will provide some direction to staff so we can come back on a more periodic basis to give updates to both the city council and school board. Things have changed, as as Tracy indicated, uh, we had a a claim filed against the city and school district, and it came out and. A property line that we thought belonged to the school belonged to the city, and what the school thought was theirs belonged to the to the city and vice versa. And so it's really important for us to get clear direction on these. Bullet points that have evolved. City staff has, over the period of time, including when we had some of the COVID lockdowns, came back to both the city council and board for approval. Both myself, uh. And and various staff members from Glendora have been to both. For example, we al- we opened up to the teen center to in-person help for the high school and middle school students that didn't have anywhere to go during COVID. Uh, we also then worked on agreements for bathroom being cleaned and use of the of the gyms, but those were one-off agreements that required approval of both the city council and school district. What we're hoping for tonight is to get some additional clarification and direction by both boards. That was the conversation we had when the meeting was set up, to provide that unified direction that both groups could agree on, so we can ensure that if these deal points are not it, and there's direction that we're not going. To mom and dad and to dad and mom and back and forth with changes. Dominic and I have clear direction at the end of this meeting on where we're gonna go forward and have staff work on, and hopefully both the board and school district do as well, so. Or city council and board do as well, so uh from that standpoint, our hope is this evening that we have some direction moving forward on these big ticket items, so we can come back on a quarterly basis and provide updates to both the city council and school district.
For me personally. Most important reason I think we're here tonight is because we want to hear what these guys have to say. I think it's important for the community, for the parents, for the residents here in town to understand. At um, the 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 gates of the school are not locked just because somebody wants to lock the gates. There's reasons behind all of this, and we need to work together to try to figure out ways to make all of this stuff work. And it was just like today when we talked about the snack bars, I guarantee you, we're probably gonna hear from somebody tonight. Is gonna share something with us that we hadn't thought about yet. So I think it's important for this conversation to, you know, you worry about going back and forth between mom and dad. We want grandpa and grandma to tell us. If you got any ideas that we we want to hear about as well, so I think that's the most important reason for this meeting.
I think there's a frustration point for me. Is that uh we've been working on this for a very long time, and uh so the deal points. That are in our packet, is that something that both school district and the city have been working on?
You're gonna tell us tonight, hopefully.
But how long, so you've been working this through this whole time period?
We've had, you know, we've had different people and administrations that have come in and out, and and Tracy and Moises have done an incredible job going back through history of time. Um. You know, we have, there's several people in the audience that have have been involved in these agreements even for decades before, and have been great historians to us to help us understand how they're facilitated, but. As you mentioned, we are absolutely hoping we've worked together, we we think this is a great approach moving forward. We want to get your blessing this evening. So that sports leagues in the community, like you indicated. Um, John has told me, you know, they're the the schools' kids in the in the mornings and our kids in the afternoon, and. And with sort of that as our our view, we want to make sure that we're both on the same page with how we're gonna accomplish that.
Gary, I think that we've all heard from the community over these past several years of what's been going on or not working correctly, or what has been working correctly. Um, to that point. Um, the pool, we talked about pool, we don't have that pool, do we not? Do not. Did we, didn't we pay for half of it to be built?
No, I I don't know what the total cost of it. We made a financial contribution to it, but it's not half ownership to the city.
At that time, the city was contemplating building a pool, and it was prohibitively expensive, and the school district was also, so the city became a partner for use. We sort of bought into a timeshare, so to speak. Um, Tracy, would you mind giving a brief overview of construction on school and why it's so different from the city, and I'll tell you why we don't have an ownership in some of these areas?
Yeah, so the school district has to comply with something called D S A, which is a different standard. Um, to ensure that the safety of students are. The facilities that they're in are built to a whole different standard level. And that includes all facilities, whether it's um outdoor um. Sports fil- sports activities that are going on, whether it's indoor, um, any place where a student is housed has to be built to a very different standard. Um, the cost to be able to uh make that happen. Um, is probably triple what the city would pay for some of the same type of services, or. If a private person was to do, it'd be substantially less money because they can go out for the lowest bid. Although we do the lowest bid, it has to be built to those very specific standards, so it's a great question.
Don't own half of it.
We own responsibility for future capital upgrades to make sure that we are allowed a continued use of that facility. In the summer, we have classes and, you know, we pay for lifeguards and do programming and and run for our residents to have access to a pool.
Oh, in your outline, I noticed that something could possibly could be added. There is a a way of communicating. I don't see anything quite in there for that. I think that's key, as some of the folks in the audience mentioned, is communication's key. Communication's key in everything in life. And there's nothing there, which brings up. Um, also. When this gets worked out, as is right now, I think it's been like over two years, three years, that we don't have access via keys anymore because of certain issues in the past. How are we gonna rectify that? We also have issues where the public and or the city. Has uh flyers that they usually put out there, and uh it uh doesn't get communicated through the school system or get distributed through the school system. Is that something that's gonna be addressed through? I mean, that should be a no burn, it should be an automatic thing, but it apparently looks like we're gonna have to memorialize this somehow in an agreement. On who wants to take that?
I think we can refer to those, but. The school, for example, the school district has ways where information gets out to students. They have their own protocols and requirements, as does the city when we pass things along through our end, but. I think that's a great point. I think. I think it's important for us to highlight and review the ways in which we communicate to the community jointly. Absolutely, I think that's that's a great point.
I guess to help you, what I'm trying to say is we have a Boy Scout issues, they've been trying to get flyers out, then have not been able to get flyers out, and there is a process in place at the school to do so, to approve them and stamp them. The city here has flyers that they've tried to put out for quite some time, several years, and they don't get put out. Uh, so that's part of the communication process. Um, can that be addressed with the school district, either through this agreement, or does it even need to be in an agreement? Uh, part of a communication plan?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it needs to be in the agreement or not. I mean, I can go either way with it, but I think we've tried to go more green, and so one of the things that we do is we actually have a section underneath our website. Where we actually post those flyers uh for our parents, and our parents have access to that uh in their parent portal. And also on our website to be able to see those things. Sometimes it's the timeliness of when things come in. And I recently learned about a Boy Scout flyer and immediately reached out to see if I could find out where it was, because it did not come through my offices. Typically, it goes through our Ed Services Department to be able to review. Um, and then we actually post them on our website. We really don't distribute flyers anymore. Um, versus, you know, versus like how it was, you know, when my children were in school, they used to have a backpack full of, you know, different flyers that would come for different activities. We've also looked at ways that we would help um some of our youth groups that are out there in the community to be able to actually put up a banner. When they were actually doing some of their recruitments uh for um Little League. I know we've had signups for soccer, that we've actually had some banners saying that they're, you know, doing soccer signups on a certain day. We've allowed for those to go on our school property um to be able to help advertisement.
So what I'm hearing back from uh scouts and our folks as well, that that doesn't work, that the old fashioned flyers work best. And uh, is there a way we can get back to that?
I think it's something we can go back and we can uh review and and see, you know, the best way to go. See, what? What was the problem before the past as to why it stopped? I don't know. Um, I was just, I would just tell you that we have tried to go more green and use less paper.
Right, um, so another question that was brought up earlier is about who owns what? We, at one time, we're gonna do a survey to find out who owns what. Are we still gonna do that?
I think we we've actually. Conducted some surveys in the past to figure out who owns what and where the lines are. Um, I don't think we need that right now. We have, we know what we own. Um. We sometimes uh have argued in the past of uh where the line exactly is as it relates to sports fields, but I don't think that we need that level of specificity. As it relates to how we're contemplating the agreement uh forward.
Are you saying we're not gonna sue surveys?
This point, I don't think that that's necessary.
If the city, for example, takes over responsibility for maintenance, and we jointly indemnify each other and move forward, that may not be an issue, but those lines can always be clarified after the fact that they have to. So yeah, that's like lights on the school district, the city of, like, those types of things are much more easily addressed. It's. The first base side of the city field. Six inches, you know, from home plate and twelve and a half inches from the outfield pole. Or actually school district property, for example, that becomes a challenge, but we can address that through the agreement, absolutely.
I just wanted to say that, you know, this is a, as was mentioned earlier by the mayor, this is historic as far as having. The first of its kind ever meeting. We've never had the anything like this in history. This is the very, very first. And I think that it's necessary to have it. I'm just not sure about the timing of the meeting. And because we're gonna have uh possibly, you know. Two new uh board members on the other side, and um. And uh they're not gonna be part of this discussion at this point in time, but with that, um, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Thompson.
Madam Mayor. Has to be called on.
And uh, did you have a score to share with us?
Yeah, well. My enthusiasm uh waned. Uh, for some of you. The varsity water polo team was in their second round. And uh Tuesday night, they uh won, and tonight they played. And uh went to overtime. And we lost by two. So uh, I'm not a happy guy, and I know that Dominic wasn't or isn't. Uh, because of that, not because of this, but just because of, we don't like to lose.
Yeah, don't put it out on us.
To Northwood. I I I don't even know where Northwood is. I like Northwoods, but I don't know what uh Northwood is. Obviously, yeah. So with that said, uh. The season is over, so uh that's that's just the way it is. Um. I I appreciate uh the. The fact that we're here. Uh, as has been said, this has been a ongoing. Experience for a number of years, uh, way, way too too long, in my view. And I. And I do hope that we can land the plane soon on all of these things. Because every day there's, there's a question mark. And so I, I highly support what presenters shared and where we're going. And I want to give whatever support that I can give to remove the impediments to, you know, make this work. With that said, I, and I don't think I'll get a question here. But I know that the district is constricted from some of the funding that it gets. And I know it's getting worse. I understand that. And sadly, our, you know, last bond, our last bond attempt failed and that's not good. I, and that's part of why that I think there's such an important purpose to what we're doing. Because if the city can be a more active player in being able to create efficiencies. Hopefully that will free up some funds for, for our kids. And yet I am concerned about the financial abilities to execute this. And, and I hope that Tracy, you can pull some rabbits from the hat. Because historically, the answer has been no, and then let's talk about it. And it would be nice for that not to occur. And I say that because about a year and a half ago, I was up at the American League field and there was a significant leak by the major league. Blockhouse. If you don't know what a blockhouse is, then you really have not lived. Because it's a wonderful thing that's used for many things. And Mario, who was there, said, well, how are we going to get this fixed? And you're on the city council and this is you. And I go, it's really, oh, okay. And at the end of the day, you know, Adam's right, half of the American League field is allegedly owned by us. And half of it's allegedly owned by the district. So I was told that the district called and the players then are, are not you now. So this is not impugning any of you. And the plumber couldn't come out until Tuesday. Well, this was on a Friday. And if you know anything about, about that field, it's, it's used a lot over the weekend. So the city came out, fixed it. The guys next door were able to do that. Games continued to play. But then when there was talk about who was going to pay for that. Unfortunately, you know, the, we were told, well, we don't have the money for, you know, that. And so that's a real live example. Adam and others referred to a trip and fall that we jointly experienced. And I think the city at the end of the day kind of came in and cleaned up that financially. And so these things happen every day. Not every day, but during the season, it's, so this thing needs to get done. We don't have time for us to spend another seven years, as Gary has said, to think about this. Because at the end of the day, there's kids that need to play whatever sport. It's basketball. It's, you know, whatever. And it's not right for coaches to be locked out, to be told they can't play this or that. Because of lack of awareness, lack of understanding what insurance is or legal stuff. They don't care about that. When you're 10, 12 years old, they don't care about that and neither do parents. And so I, I'm, I'm venting here, I guess, but I'm venting in the hopes that, that we can get this done. Because, you know, I know these two guys right here, Randy and, and, and John. And I don't know the National League guys as much, but I, but I know you went through a lot of crap. Trying to get some things fixed and it's not right. It's just not right. We need to be a responsive group, all of us do. And so I hope that we can get, get this thing done. I, I, I appreciate, and I'm not going to name names because I don't want to not name the right name. But I appreciate the colleagues that I have to, you know, my left. When the basketball year last year almost didn't happen. And because, well, we can't open the gym, we can't use restrooms. And thank you to the colleagues that stepped in. And Adam and you were able to work out whatever agreement that you did and allow basketball to happen. Because that's a really important thing here in town. And that was a similar thing to soccer. Well, we can't have the ability to restroom. Well, you know, we finally got that worked out, but we shouldn't have to have a 911 call to do normal things. And so again, we need to get these things worked out. So I really hope that that, that that can occur. I'm assuming that Whitcomb, do they have an, you know, SRO that is full time there? Or is it halftime? Is it part of the slide that you guys shared? Okay, all right. I, I was thinking that it was a full time. So I think that that's all that I really need to, you know, say, I'm, I'm encouraged that we're here. I just hope that this ball can really be, be moved fast. So thank you.
All right, thank you. President Merkley.
One thing I have to say, Mr. Thompson, you mentioned that Tracy can pull that rabbit out of the hat. And if anybody can, she'll be the one to do it. She's, she knows where the grants are. So we appreciate that very much. So we will start with Vice President Ruder.
Okay, thank you very much. I thank everybody for joining us all together here tonight. It really is wonderful. And as many have mentioned, pastime to put this joint agreement to bed, frankly. I appreciate the public comments that we received this evening. Mr. Ketyeriski, I know you and I have had conversations about this. And I hope, not as an excuse, but in the spirit of your comment as well, that you can see how there hasn't been a process. And there hasn't been a procedure in the past. So when you get convoluted answers to questions. Or maybe a different answer from one side of the, of the table and one, a different answer on the other side. It's because the, the, the protocols haven't been established or haven't been established for a while. And that's what I think everyone's intent here is tonight. And hopefully it'll be a lot clearer moving forward. I do know how hard the volunteers at all of our different sports leagues work. Once upon a time, I too was a Glendora American Little League board member. And can appreciate all the time and effort. So thank you all to everybody who is coming here. I've got a few more specific questions that community, community members come to me about. And I warned Mrs. Vikar that I was going to be asking some of these questions. Mr. Frieden doll sort of alluded to it, but didn't ask the direct question in that, why aren't our fields open on the weekends? Maybe like they used to be at one time?
For a couple of reasons. The fields aren't open due to liability type reasons. We actually have to have certain agreements that are in place. And so our elementary and our middle schools are often closed up and not available to the community unless they've actually gone through the reservation system. And we've put something in place. Additionally, if we are opening up our gates, we have to bring somebody in on overtime. And that requires a minimum based on our contracts. And so there is a cost that's, that's part of that. And we have tried up until now to not charge. And we have tried to make sure that we are able to help and support the community as much as possible. But there are additional added costs, especially as we start looking forward to how we deal with mitigations coming forward with water mitigation. The need probably to do artificial turf in some places. There's going to be some added costs to all of us so that our students can play on fields that would be adequate. And be safe for them to be able to play on as we deal with some of the responses that are happening in our world and our community now.
Okay, another question that I have been texted frequently is why are people not able at Sandberg? Able to pull down the hill anymore and park in that sort of middle parking dirt lot? Near the Spartan Garden area? If you could answer that for the record, please.
I will. So that little drive that you're referring to is actually a utility drive. It is really meant for our staff to be able to use to go from one tier or for the city staff to be able to use to go from one tier to the other. It is not a road and it is not conducive for regular vehicles to be on. As a matter of fact, it's much smaller, the way how it's actually been graded and the type of asphalt that's on it is not the same as you would have either in a parking lot or in a city road. And so it was never meant for that purpose. As you go down, it actually falters off and you don't even have all the asphalt that's there. It actually goes into the dirt area. It's a little choppy and we would be concerned about someone getting injured or hurt because they would go down that. There's a huge risk involved.
Okay, so it's the road itself. And then once you're down there, it's not exactly paved or graded at all as far as somebody potentially having?
That's correct. And you actually have to have plans on file with the state as to where people can legally park on school grounds. And that is not a place where you can legally park. I know a question has come up as to how, how come it's okay for us to bring one of our vehicles down? It's different. They're doing it for maintenance purposes. It's, it's a very short time period. Again, it is not really what I would call a road. It is really a utility access point to be able to get down. It's more of a path and not a road.
Okay, another popular question that I get is why can the little leagues or sports leagues not? Maybe they have in the past or they've figured out ways to do this, but let's say bring in the Kona ice truck for fundraisers and have it be out in the parking lot anymore?
Great question. So this really has to do with liability insurance and liability risk. So when the little league is utilizing the fields, their insurance is really covering them for where the field area is. That is really their piece of it, coming on to, to bring a truck on and drive over property area. That maybe was not conducive for a large size vehicle such as a food truck to come onboard or a semi truck. If let's say the In-N-Out truck was coming, one of my favorites. Those are not things that are necessarily conducive to be able to go through all that area. And so the other piece has to do with, there's other mitigations that would have to be done for our insurance purposes to be able to allow for that. So basically it's not our, our show that's happening. It's really belonging to the youth league. And because it's on our property, we then have the exposure for whatever happens, even if it's not our event.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is a little involved or a little, a couple of layers here. We have a lot of generous donors and laborers, if you will, that are willing to do capital improvements. On our baseball fields in particular, and maybe the soccer fields and, and basketball, whatever. I, I just can, I just can remember that there were different landscape contractors and cement, et cetera, that were willing to maybe donate their labor or donate their material. Whatever the case might be to do projects to what everybody would think would be, would be to upgrade our fields. Can you explain why that is a little complicated for us? You mentioned the Division of State Architects was the DSA acronym that you referred to earlier. But could you just mention that or get into that a little bit? And then also how it relates to capital project and the American Disability Act as far as our properties are concerned?
Great questions. And although I will say there is a preamble inside the concept paper. That we would like to be able to identify potential projects for the future that perhaps our youth groups would like to see on the property. It would mean that we would need to go back and actually do our due diligence for the work. But I do recognize that there is an important element there that if we could do this the right way. And I saw a really great presentation by the county of LA last year for their parks. And they actually talked about a joint use where basically if one of the youth groups wanted to build, let's say the snack bar, it was done to a certain spec or standard. I actually like that idea and I think it's the way for us to be able to partner with our youth groups who have been invested for a long period of time. I know they get concerned when other people come on to, onto their fields because they have invested time manicuring them, helping to do some of that. And we've had some side agreements where we've been able to do some of that work and it's been good work and it's much appreciated. But I want to figure out ways that we can continue to maybe do that versus maybe in lieu of a fee, if that would be something that might be acceptable. So those are some things that we're kind of putting in here. We're still having discussions as to how that would work. But I thought maybe it might be a way to help find a win-win as we move forward in looking at how we can mitigate that. But going back to your question, which is the concern, if they go off and do it without permission. We have to go through and actually get permissions and ensure that we are up to the codes. And this was mentioned by Mr. Raymond a little bit earlier, that we have much more strict regulations compared to any other kind of property. It has to be up to a standard that meets the DSA standard and meets the American Disability Act. Once you change something, everything gets looked at by the department, by the DSA. And so that Division of State Architects starts looking at everything. And if they come out and do an inspection and see that there's been a change. Anything that was done from the time that they've inspected our property at any other time could be held accountable for being either destroyed. At the cost of the district to be able to go off and get rid of it and or upgrade it to whatever the right, correct standard would be for today's date. And I think that's probably one of the most important things. It could have been something that was done 15 years ago, for a long time. Seems like it's great, but because it was done and wasn't actually documented, we hold a liability with that. And a responsibility to make sure that we bring it up to the current standard if we never got the permission.
I appreciate you starting off your answer with what your potential solution is that you've figured out or that you've seen ways that other cities have. Been able to creatively come up with a, a way for outside groups and schools or communities to work together. So thank you very much. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Dr. Fernando?
I don't know if I can beat a dead horse more, but I do want to thank Mr. Lopez and Ms. Vikar. Thank you for being such a great collaborator to the school district. I've heard a lot about the collaboration that you have established with us. Wow, I've never been asked to speak more loudly. So, and I do appreciate it because I know that unfortunately gentleman handshakes create vagueness. And they create a lack of clarity and they also end up being very personality driven. And so I think it's really important that as we continue this joint use agreement, that that is clear in terms of what the roles and responsibilities are. And actually I think the, the meeting couldn't be held at a better time, given the fact that this was something that we asked the school district administration to do several years ago. So it's, it's really quite timely. I also just want to thank all the volunteers in the room for their work, for the ways that they create social capital in our community. My kids run cross-country and track, so they, they don't participate in these kinds of events. They're more concerned about the hill on the rain, that it kills them on a mild repeat. That's been their concern. But thank you for the work that you're doing, the ways that you mentor our kids, the ways that you create character for our students. That's part of the learning process that adds to the out of the classroom experience. That creates better human beings, better men and women that go on, do great things out inside and outside of Glendora. So you are, I would say, co-educators in our community. And we want you to be valued in that. And thank you for expressing the frustrations that you've experienced. And I hope that through these joint use agreements that we'll be able to effectively deal with those. So thank you.
Mr. Ellenson?
Thank you, President Merkley. Thank you to everyone for organizing this meeting. Like some of my colleagues on the board and some of the council members have said. Like some of my colleagues on the board and some of the council members have said, this has been something that's been a priority for various board members and council members for years that we've been working on. And I fully appreciate the challenge in attempting to resolve this without a joint session like this because you own certain light poles at the tennis courts and we own certain lines up to a certain amount of inches moving forward. There's something at Sellers with some water thing on the southernmost border that has some other easement issue. And these do come up. Unfortunately, both of our bodies are governed by various institutions, not to mention the liability concerns that we have when our students and the community are, are on our field. So it's unfortunate that we have to deal with all of this, but it is the reality. You went through a long history. You talked about like a 1970 agreement when I wasn't even alive when that happened and we're still working through agreements that were still in effect. So, you know, I think that if you're hearing anything from any of us, if what you're looking for is our direction, for me in particular, I can say that while I appreciate that these realities exist, for our constituents in our community, I don't think it really matters to them because they just want facilities that they can use safely for the activities. And whether the school district is contracting with the leagues and sports groups directly or through the city, I don't think it matters. I think everyone is willing to use a reservation system. I think everyone's willing to pay their fair share of the cost. If someone's willing to donate in-kind services, I think they're, they're expecting reasonably to pay a lower fee for what that is. But from the school board's perspective, our number one priority is the academic program of our students. And so I think everyone can appreciate that as well, that, you know, all of these fields that we have, that has to be priority number one. The safety of our students during school hours and the use of our fields and facilities to support the academic program. Beyond that, we want to and are obligated to by California law to make our facilities available to the community to use without sacrificing safety, without exposing ourselves to liability. We want to do that, but we have a limited budget as well, like the city does. So we have to ensure that the use of our fields is appropriate and reasonable and within bounds, not taken advantage of and not jeopardizing our number one priority, the academic program of our students. So that's my input on what we can and should do. And at the end of the day, you know, who owns what light fixture doesn't matter. My suggestion is to start from scratch and come up with very reasonable and very clear agreements between the two bodies that everyone can understand, that our leagues and sports folks can comply with and eliminate as much confusion as possible. And I think that that's something that can last beyond whoever is sitting in any of these seats. Thank you for, for all the work you've done up to this point. I hope that this joint meeting makes it a lot easier for the city and the school district to reach that end goal. Thank you.
Ms. Borg?
Well, last, but certainly hopefully not least, I wanted to ask Mrs. Vikar just a direct question. Who owns the property our schools sit on?
The school district actually owns the properties, the school district, the, the, all the property where our schools are at.
Okay.
That's owned by the school district.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. And where does the school district get the money to pay for that?
Well, the money over time has come in different, different forms to be able to either build the facilities, but it comes from the tax, from the taxpayers.
The taxpayers and the, and the state?
And the state.
Yes.
From state, from varieties.
And so I, I appreciate, I just wanted to make, make that clear, that you have a perfect right to be concerned about things. But again, I don't want to re, you know, beat a dead horse here, but we are, the district is bound by the DSA as far as building and constructing things. And it's really disheartening to a, a teacher to walk out to teach PE and can't teach PE because there's a bulldozer on the field and no one's been notified that the district didn't even know about it. So we have to work together to get improvements made and we have to notify each other so we go through the proper procedures to get things done. I want to thank Adam, Mr. Raymond for, and also for Mrs. Vikar for the crossing light at the high school that finally got fixed and mainly for putting out those two portable warning signs on either side of it. The kids really took, it took them a couple of days, I think, to get used to pushing the buttons again, but they're all pushing them again and the, the lights are working nice and bright and it's a very nice relief there. Could you explain, Mrs. Vikar, the, the new way, rather than keys, what are we going to start looking at for access to our facilities, for sports leagues, for our own staff?
Great question. Depending on the hours and if, as we move forward this agreement, when, what we've been doing here most recently is we've actually had a lockbox that's been available. Keys have been made available to the city when they've been helping us on weekend activities that are happening. It seems like it's working pretty well. It's kind of a little bit of an antiquated system. I would hope that in the future we would be able to move to a more modern technology type of a system where maybe there would be a swipe card that would allow for that. Then we'd actually know who has that swipe card and the ID number that would go with it. That would be really beneficial because then we know that the people have signed and said that they were going to do what they were going to do with our fields with the right people. It also would give us a timestamp so that we know whether or not it's happening during the hours that we've given permission to be able to use or whether or not it's happening at 11:00 PM at night, which would be a whole different story if somebody's going on to our fields and having a late night pickup game, so to speak. Anyways, there are some ways I think we can.
Or our gyms.
Or our gyms. And we had access for both our pool and our gyms at unusual hours of the evening and on holidays that sometimes we don't know that there's going to be somebody in there. And that's a huge liability to the district. So trying to find ways that we can ensure that the communication's good, that we've got ways for the community to know that they can actually use our facilities is really important. And then making sure that, you know, the maintenance and, and has been done correctly and someone has taken care of what they said they were going to do and no surprises.
Thank you. And I just want to thank everyone down the line here because you, I'm checking off the things I wanted to ask as they got asked. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All of my questions have been answered too. I wrote them down and everyone answered them. But I am very glad for all of those who work in the youth program. My, my boys played baseball and soccer and it was a great experience for them. And my youngest daughter played Lassie League and soccer. So I know the things that they learned and I know that it's from the volunteers. I spent a lot of time in the snack bar. So thank you for that.
Did you have further questions? You said earlier that you wanted to come back to something.
Well, again, I didn't want to bring these things up earlier because we were talking about the, the joint agreement, but we were talking about some additional opportunities that we might have. And so for those of you that may not know, I was a coach here in town for 35 years. I stopped coaching like three years ago and I started when I was 12. So, but it's one of those things I've always thought about, you know, our, our sports leagues in town here, they're, they're an extension of our education system. You know, we, we have the same students playing in these leagues as we do in the schools and as we do playing in our parks. And so it's just another extension. That's why I think a lot of these things are so important. But a couple of things I wanted to throw out that, just questions that, that I had. We talk about the ability of having the fields, the school grounds open to the public after hours and on weekends and things. And I understand the safety issue. I understand liabilities, but I'm more concerned about safety because the safety of our kids is the most important thing that we can be worried about. Today, we're living in a different world than we were when Joe Finkbeiner was sitting in this seat. And so we have to, we have to try to find if there's ways to address that. And one of the things I came up with that we talked about when we, we had our smaller meeting is the possibility of separating the actual school buildings from the fields. And if that could be done with fencing or some sort of security, and we talked about the idea that whether the city could cooperate in helping to cover the cost of that, if, if that was an option. I think we could also, whether we have the money or whether we're able to fit it into our budgets, maybe we can collaborate on some grant money that we could go and chase and try to find in order to do something like that. So if that's a possibility, I'd like for that to be part of this conversation moving forward. I, I have to bring up an issue that, that none of us like to talk about, but you know, homelessness has become more and more of an issue everywhere in, in California and to the country. And we really need to be concerned about the idea, we don't want people camping on those sites just because we want them to be open so I can take my kids down there and, and play a game of catch. So those are things that we have to try to figure out how to address. And I think it's something that the city would be willing to collaborate on and try to figure out if, if there's a compromise that we can do to try to, try to make that type of thing happen. The other thing I wanted to point out that everything else pretty much got covered, but for, for the public, the, the idea of the funding, the way the schools are funded, it, it sucks. It sucks for us. It really does. Okay, I, I went through and I don't know how accurate these numbers are, but I went through a system and, and was able to find the average per student funding from the state of California for the school districts in East San Gabriel Valley. San Marino gets less money than we do per student by $28. They get $28 less per student than we do. Besides that, every school district in San Gabriel Valley, east of Pasadena, gets more money than Glendora Unified does. If we just got the same amount of money, if Glendora Unified got the same amount of money as Charter Oak, which Charter Oak is partially in the city of Glendora, they got the same amount of money as Charter Oak as a, per student, you, you guys would have an extra four and a half million dollars a year just with that. If, yeah, yes, if you got the same amount of money as Baldwin Park, you would have over $18 million more in your budget every year. And the state formula, the way that they fund the schools is just, is not fair. And that's something that I think we could collaborate on and go to Sacramento and lobby with our local representatives to talk about the fact that, yes, there needs, there are some schools that have more needs than others do, but the difference is so great today that it really hurts certain schools at a disadvantage. And I don't know this, I don't know anybody that lives in San Marino, but I've heard that in San Marino, they actually put a thing out at the beginning of the year and they asked the parents of every student to make a contribution to the school district in order to make up, make up that difference. So it, I, I want to make sure that, that the, the board knows and the school district knows that I know that my colleagues, I, I'm pretty sure they all agree with me that we go to Sacramento multiple times a year. We have a lot of conversations with our local representatives about issues that affect the, the residents of Glendora. And it would really be great if we had the opportunity to work together to try to address some of those funding shortfalls because we need to do something to try to figure out what we can do in order to get the funding up for our Glendora Unified School District. Also, you know, we talked about the fact that we had a bond a couple of years ago that, that didn't, didn't make it. And we need to start talking about that as a community. You know, when you talk about passing a bond, you're going, well, you know, you don't want another tax added on. You don't think of it as a tax, you think of it as an investment in the community. When we're investing back into the school districts, even if you don't have kids in the community, think about nothing more than your home values. I think everybody here knows what I do for a living or what I used to do for a living, but the whole thing is the stronger we can keep our school districts in town, the more it, it, it helps the entire community, whether you have students in the school district or not. It helps the property values, property value stays up, we get more property taxes, it helps the entire community. So these are just a couple of things that as you move forward with these conversations, if, if that could be part of the conversation, unless anybody here would object to that. But, but th- those are the other things when we talk about other opportunities that we might have, I, I think I'd like to add some of those. So that's all else I had. Thanks.
Mr. Boyer, you're singing our song. We really like that one. Mrs. Ruder had a comment.
I just wanted to, as a point of clarification, so San Marino has a very strong education foundation and that's who's collecting those dollars at the beginning of the school year. So at the beginning of the school year, they'll put a dollar amount, $150 per student as far as that's concerned, to help make up that gap that you're talking about in the local control funding formula. And they've been very successful at doing that. And then to your point exactly, as far as the bond is concerned, they're on a maybe three to five-year rotating schedule of bonds and parcel taxes that they pass every time. And so it may be a bond for capital improvements and technology improvements and that kind of stuff. And then two or three years later, it's a parcel tax where they're able to address salaries. You can't use bond money to pay people. So you got to have it switching on and off, on and off that, that way. So San Marino has been a masterclass at those rotating bonds and parcel taxes to be able to keep up with what the state, because they would be in a same, similar makeup as we are as far as the way that they're funded and the lack of constant supplemental and concentration funds that other districts may get that we don't get because of our student population. So they, they have decided as a community to make that up on their own. And, and they can't get the whole way to Baldwin Park. They can't, you know, do that, but they, they certainly have a plan on, on how they're going to address it that way.
And I would also add the same city, from a city standpoint, they also pay for public safety out of a, out of a property tax assessment as well. Those two bond, those two measures expire like two years apart and they're periodically updated. They were just recently updated both.
No, I think, oh.
Ms. Borg has something to say.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to add to that, that it's been 17 years since Glendora's passed a bond for their schools and that's pretty much a long time. And, and again, there's three pots of money. We get one fully like every other district gets, the base grant, and then we get partial supplemental and no concentration monies at all because of our student population.
And the 17 years since we passed a bond, technology has turned over how many times? Is so insane.
And I have to say that, that's something since I've been on the board that I've asked for since day one was one, one-to-one technology. And we did leverage our COVID funds so that we were able to do that for each student. Without those funds, we, I don't know where we'd be still with getting one-to-one devices.
And with one-to-one devices, they have to be replaced every three to five, three years or?
Correct. We're already looking at some of them being outdated now. So we need a, we need a tech plan to get the replacements going.
Yeah, I was going to say, I know in the last 17 years, I went from a pager to a flip phone to now a smartphone. So it changes. No, and I appreciate Tracy, your work that you've been looking into in grants. That's one of my hopes is that the city and the school district can continue to look together at shared grant possibilities. It would be a fabulous hope and dream that the track and field at the high school could be redone and that could be a tremendous place for the community to have access to if we shared that together, you know, have some exercise equipment, maybe. I don't know. I know we get into the liability issue, but you know, just dreaming of a great facility there that people could go and walk and use and it would benefit the school, benefit the city. So, so that's a dream is working, looking at grant money that we could both apply for. And then of course continuing to find ways to fix and use the pool. But to Mr. Alawas, to your point, why we're having this meeting, again, it goes back to Mr. Raymond's analogy of mom and dad in the room that we're hoping that if everybody's here together, my hope in the second public comment time is that the sports teams and field folks in the room can address some of your hopes, dreams, concerns so that together both groups can hear what you would like to see happen. That would be really helpful to us, that it's, this is one of the ways in which we can have some of that communication by having all of us here together. So unless there's any last questions, I will go to the second public comment time, Mr. Raymond.
Sorry about that. Just going to ask if maybe there's a motion both the city council and school board could adopt to, to agree with the proposed framework and any joint legislative efforts to come back for approval on that end? We'd be happy to do that, if that's okay?
I would like to so move.
But I asked that we might save that until after we get the public comment?
Absolutely.
All right, then I will come back to that. So again, just a reminder during the public comment time to please address what we are here tonight to discuss about is on our agenda. And again, any of the sports teams and folks in the audience that use the fields by the city, by the school district, please give us your input, your hopes and dreams because it helps us to know what the needs are. With that, I will go to our first public comment card, Michael Barron. With that, I will go to our first public comment card, uh, Michael Barron.
Thank you very much, uh, school district and city council. Uh, I guess I would request as a public or as a resident here in Glendora is. There were two issues that I heard that kind of resonated for me. One was clarification. If the purpose of this meeting was for clarification, well, the minutes of this meeting should identify what was clarified. Because I heard a lot of great ideas and most of them were added on top of the issues that already existed for the past seven years. So. Someone, I hope, can articulate what was clarified. Second. The um, let me just look at my notes here. Direction, I heard that term too, direction. I think direction is more than just saying, yes, let's do the master joint agreement. I think the point that this group. The board of uh education, the city council. Your primary task is not to get into the weeds and the details, it's to set. Direction, and I have not heard a clear statement of what that direction is, other than let's do the master agreement. If that's the direction, great, let's, again, I would say, please include that in the minutes to the meeting. But yes, there was a lot of good ideas. Also, and I know the. The attitudes. Of everyone is to do the best that can be done for the students, for the schools, for the city, uh, for the community. I don't doubt that, but I also hear the words. That we can't do that because of liability, I think I heard that about five times. And yes, you can't just ignore liability, but that's what insurance is for and insurance costs money. Money is part of the budget. And there's a prioritization process for the budget. The boards have control over that priority. How important are these issues that were discussed tonight to you? You can decide whether more facilities get opened up to the public by addressing the liability issues. City of Monrovia. Has his, gosh, great deal at their library park and they have bands, they have students performing. Uh, songs, they have all sorts of trucks selling Kona ice. You know, if they can figure out how to deal with the liability issue, I would challenge us to figure that out. Because I know the attitudes there, the desires there, and we need to take that attitude of, yes, we can't do it now. But but let's think about, how could we do it? You know, that's the attitude I'd like to see adopted. So thank you very much again. Thanks for all the efforts that you all put in and uh. This is good, thank you.
Thank you. Randy Timchek?
Hello, good evening. Um, my name is Randy Timcheck, I am here uh with John Katariski, I'm on the board at uh. Glendora American Little League, also I was the manager of the twelve year old state championship team this year. So a couple of things, number one, uh, we talked about like things we're gonna be doing in the future about, you know, saving money and turf. Well. Glendora Americans already spent since I've been on the board seventy five thousand dollars out of our own money. People like myself that have donated to put turf into those fields. So I feel like. Um, the partnership needs to improve between. The Little League, the school district, um, and hopefully, you know, um, my wife always tells me, you know, don't come with problems, come with solutions. So my solution would be my ask. Is that somebody whoever takes it over, um, whether it's the city or it's the school district. That they really kind of step up with, you know, the maintenance. Providing uh the making sure the fields are good, not just for Glendora American, but for all of the different facilities to make sure it's very consistent across the city of Glendora. So that all of our kids have a great opportunity to play in Glendora and it's consistent, so not one facility is like amazing. And then the other facility is not that great, it's like, I don't want to keep going to that facility because this field, right, it should be more equal. Number two is, is I would also, I I don't think people would mind if if. We charged, you know, for field usage. As long as we have a a good reservation system. And the reason I say that is, is because today there are fields that we simply can't use. Okay, um, I'm gonna give an example. So I also, I coached a travel ball team here in town called the Bulldogs. And that was a huge reason why our team won the state championship this year. These are all future, hopefully future Glendora High School baseball players. The team had to disband. They didn't want to disband, they had to disband. Why? Because we don't have a field to use. Okay, I talked to the Pony League, I asked the president of Pony League, you can't use my field. This is what I was told. That is ridiculous. These are kids, they're Glendora kids. They want to go to high school, so now what are they doing? They're playing travel baseball outside of our city. I have te- kids on four different teams and guess what? The San Dimas coach coaches one of them, the Bonita High School coach coaches one of them, guess where they're gonna go to high school? Maybe not Glendora, right? So we need a better solution for field usage and be able to have a program if they don't want to play pony. They should be able to play travel baseball on a beautiful field that sits right next to Glendora American Little League. It should not be. Under one person's reign. That field needs to be accessible and if you have to reserve time and pay for it. Totally fine, no problem, that's like every other travel program, but we should have a better solution for our kids. I'm not talking about outside programs, I'm talking about for our kids here in Glendora. That would be my ask. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Katie Ferrari Lockenmeyer?
I'm gonna read off my notes, so pardon me. Uh, for starters, thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Katie Ferrari Lockenmeyer and I'm the president of Glendora Youth Football and Cheer. My board and I brought back the league after a few chaotic years with less than a thousand dollars this season. Uh, our cheer program. Was gone for two years and we brought that back after um. After consulting with the board and we are now a gateway program for our high school. Let's see, we played on a dirt field the entire season, which was not only embarrassing. But unsafe for my football players and cheer squads. My parents complained about minor issues all season long, which I'm sure multi- a multitude of you have heard. Um. Imagine when they find out they're gonna have to pay more for a use fee, especially when families can't afford gas and groceries right now. I understand that turf is expensive and the city will have to find the budget to complete this property. And this update, but tapping your parents is not the answer right now. The school district, on another note, refused to put out flyers and said it was due to COVID, so there's clarification on that. My football league went to them multiple times and they said, due to COVID, we can't pass out flyers, but yet they can pass out pictures to students and homework every day. On this subject, um, I'm going off topic with the football league, but on the subject of SRO and school resource officers, I encourage you to fund them at all costs. I was a former Glendora police officer, as some of you may know, and it is in our best interest to fund them at every school. Uh, what else do I have? Uh, nothing other than that, um, this is my VP with me today. Um, just please know that we work very hard to bring this program back. We appreciate your support and know that. We're doing everything in our power to fundraise for our own costs and to maintain the fields. We look forward to the turf project being complete. But again, I don't believe our parents have the funding. We already charged four hundred dollars for registration, football is very expensive, cheer is double that. And we're already tapping them as it is, coming back from nothing, so thank you.
Thank you. Robert Fleming?
I'd like to thank you guys, I'm Robert Fleming, the president of Glendora Youth Soccer, probably the fiftieth president, I don't know. Uh, Glendora Youth Soccer is actually older than AYSO in the area. It's been going on since in the sixties, kind of did a little history thing on that, just to find out where we came from and was like really amazed with that. I'd like to thank the city and the school district for the fields we had to use. If you ever go by during the week or on the weekends uh during our season, it's just kids everywhere. Um, it was sad during COVID when everything was shut down and kids were just. Down and now seeing all the kids everywhere, it's just great. Um, as far as field usage, uh, we've been hearing down the line that at some point we're gonna have to pay a fee. I totally understand that, we just need to know it before we start registration. Because we try to charge the least amount as possible to get. Uh, this, the kids playing. So the way we figure out our registration fee is, we take, like this year, we have thirteen hundred kids again, which is crazy. Figure out how much we spent last year, we divide it. That is our registration fee. We don't charge extra, we have a little side money in case we do have an emergency for some equipment or something. But we charge as little as possible, we charge a hundred and fifteen dollars this year. Which they came with the jersey, shorts, socks. And paid for all the officials. We are an open league, so we do get kids from out of the area. And I think one of the most interesting things is, we'll get parents out of the area, first game shows up, they'll walk up, because I coach teams, because my kids are that age. They walk up, it's like, how much do we have to pay for the official today? No, that's included in the registration fee. You're like a hundred, at the time it was a hundred dollars, they go, a hundred dollars pays for the whole season, I go, that's it, you don't know any more money. So we're a pretty good bargain in Glendora and we want to keep it that way as much as possible, but again, we know ahead of time, we can keep it. Uh, where we can keep getting all these kids, I mean, like I said, thirteen hundred kids is amazing. Um, let's see. And. But that's all I got to say as far as, you know, give us a little time to make sure we're able to work at it within our budget so we could. Make sure that we keep all the kids engaged and out of the. You know, my son off the couch, off his phone, it's like, get out there, play some soccer and I appreciate you guys with the fields and letting us use them, especially with the school district and the cities. City letting us use their field, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Rafi? Sorry, I was trying to read your handwriting there, wasn't gonna try uh your last name. Well, welcome, thank you for being here on behalf of Glendora Pony, I did uh read that.
Uh, Rafi Santisarian, I'm a resident of Glendora, I'd just like to read a statement from Glendora Pony. Glendora Pony is proud of its relationship with both the Glendora Unified School District and the city of Glendora. We work hard to honor that relationship through our community baseball program and our partnership with Glendora High School as their freshman home field and practice field. In twenty twenty-two, Glendora High School's varsity JV and freshman teams all utilized Henderson Field. They scheduled eighteen games, including night games. Excuse me. High school games are always given priority on the field and Glendora Pony mows, preps and provides bathrooms and snack bar for all games. We're the high school's freshman CIF field and we maintain and prep for all CIF home gains in addition to freshman practices. This year, that included eight games and twenty-two practices. In the past twenty-five years, Glendora Pony has never sought financial compensation for maintenance and materials expenditures for high school use. And has always prioritized the high school's requests as part of a symbiotic relationship we have with the school district. In working with the city, we are always readily available with information and cooperation. We are an all-inclusive league, no child is turned away for any reason. Until two thousand twelve, the city of Glendora provided grants. To the city's youth leagues to help offset the cost of permanent, permanent improvements. When those grants disappeared, leagues had to cover those sho- shortfalls themselves. We all continue to work hard to continue to make these improvements. To provide the best possible programs, which in turn reflect well on the city of Glendora. Uh, for uh, every league is responsible for the maintenance of the fields they play on and we invest thousands of dollars each year in general maintenance and more in permanent improvements. And those dollar amounts do not take into account the hundreds of work hours donated by volunteers and been in maintaining the school district's fields. For the sole benefits of the kids who live in our city and attend our schools. We are responsible for field maintenance, the purchase of and maintenance of all field equipment, fertilizers, grass seeds, repairs. And general improvements. And speaking for all leagues, it is the leagues who have built the equipment buildings, dugouts, bleachers and snack bars. It is the leagues who pay the utilities, it is the leagues who put out trash cans and empty them and keep the facilities clean. We do this in cooperation with this, with the school district so we can provide use programs for our kids. We appreciate that the school district landscapes the areas outside the playing fields for the middle schools PE programs, but those areas are not utilized by the leagues. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the school district and the city to ensure that Glendora Unified School District fields and facilities. Under our care are properly maintained. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Paul Lopez.
I don't even know where to start now with everything that's been said. Thank you, first of all, to all of you that are working with our youth. Our kids are not. School kids from till three o'clock and then after that, they're the city's kids, they're, they're our kids twenty-four seven. And I think we all have to agree to that, that it's every kid, every day, and that's what I believe. The district isn't, isn't prepared or even ready to take over even mowing our own fields. When I was at the high school. I bought the only new mower that the school had in the history with Dion Kerr, our head custodian. He's everybody been there for forty years, he's had one new mower, who had to buy it, I had to buy it, I had to buy it out of my site budget. And ultimately that mower was used because. The district couldn't come mow our fields to keep the grass low enough so that we had non-contact injuries. So what did we get, non-contact injuries, kids tripping over clumps of grass, breaking their wrist, kids turning their ankles. So what did I do, reached, reached out to John, reached out to John and Gary. And we ultimately were able to get the flail mower from the city, who gladly brought it over, brought it over on a um. On a trailer and the flail mower went through our fields and cut up all the, all the clumps of grass so that we had a better field to play on. Um, always looked for ways when I was a principal to bit, to better our facilities, but getting, getting zero help from anybody. And I I don't think the board understands how much um. How much they're remiss in getting things done. I can guarantee you, I am a board member now, I am a school board member, I have a seat that I will take in a little bit, and I guarantee you, the obstacles will be removed. We will make things happen. And the charge will be to make things happen. It's not gonna be, we can't, we can't, we can't, because I don't believe in we can't. It'll be, we can, and this is how we're gonna do it. The reason we didn't pass a bond last time is because our community doesn't trust. Our community has to trust before they pass a bond. I have a seat, I think you can trust me, ask people. Okay, we will get a bond passed at some point. And I think I have a bigger vision for Glendora Unified, I have a bigger vision for our, maybe our academic program, but also our fields. I believe that we can turf the high school. With turf come lights. Because if the community is gonna use it, they're gonna want some use, maybe when it, when it gets dark early, when it's dark at five o'clock, we're gonna need lights. We should be looking at Pompeii for um our youth football, which by the way, I brought back in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, and the fields at Goddard and Sandberg really need to be looked at as turf fields. And that could be cost effective, we'd have to really look at that. But we gotta get out of the mindset of, we can't, we don't have enough money, we gotta find ways to do it. And whether it's grants or whatever it is, we have to find ways. And that'll be my charge when I sit up on the dais as a school board member, thank you.
Hey. Uh, Gary Clifford?
Thank you, madam mayor and council and board and Mr. Lopez, my name's Gary Clifford, I'm a proud Glendoran. Forty years here, sorry, more than one, and ten, ten or eleven years right up there on that city council where I proudly. Understood every part of the MOU we put together in two thousand one and two thousand six. I'm a former SRO, school resource officer, I understand that, I've managed them, uh, played it on TV. And in my police department during the day, our chief, when I was on motors, made us do crossing guard duty because we reached out to the children, it was wonderful. Like Paul, I intend to be on the school board soon and I will. Listen to what the citizens say and then not ask a question, but ask, give direction on what to do to make that taco truck be able to be in the parking lot and to do the things our citizens want. I want to thank the athletic people for being here tonight because personally, I was a coach for years, my company has sponsored every one of the leagues. And I'm here tonight to say, yes, I will listen to you, yes, we will have a great collaborative effort, yes, you can use the bathrooms and my grandchildren won't have to take. A pee behind a tree because the school. Is locked and they can't use the restroom during soccer practice, and that's just aberrant to me in a, in a city like this. I don't live in San Marino, I don't live in Baldwin Park, I live here. And I'm gonna make those things happen for our sports leagues, as I have in the past, when uh national or American needed uniforms for their playoffs. They called me, we responded, we made sure they had them, and it'll be the same thing when I'm sitting up there. We talked about budget a lot tonight, budget, I think the three most. We talked about budget a lot tonight. Budget. I think the three most important things are hiring a superintendent, running a budget, and listening to what people say in our community. In my opinion, we had an employee at the school district that worked here for twenty-four months and left with over a million dollars of our school's budget. That's horrific to me. That wouldn't happen in any other organization that I know. That hurt my heart. I'm here for a reason. I want to work with my city, collaborate with our citizens, and I don't want to have to ask a question of who owns what and what we're doing. I want to be able to say, please get the insurance so our sporting teams can do their fundraisers in the parking lot. Please collaborate with the city on a piece of property that we can do a joint use that resolves housing and a building we're not using. Please hire the interim superintendent as a, as a, as a long-term Glendoran and make that person permanent. And work hard in listening to the Glendorans when it comes to these children that we serve, that are citizens of our city, that, as Paul said, they're not there just from eight in the morning until two. Those properties belong to our citizens from our tax dollars and from our state. Our state doesn't have a product. We don't sell anything. They gain their money from us. That comes back to our schools. And on the, on the board here, I'm very proud of my city council. Everything I've had to do to work with this school board, I've had to do through the council. I want to continue to change to make sure that this board listens to the citizens and our schools are great again. Thank you.
Judy Nelson.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about collaboration between the school district and the city council, the city of Glendora. I served as city council from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty, early two thousand twenty, as mayor twice. And during that time, we had a program that I'm here to ask that it be reinstated. That program was, yes, City Gov. It required the collaboration of both the city and the school district. The purpose of it was to educate students on what city government was so that they understood how the city ran. And it was an extremely impactful program. All fifth graders participated in that program. It's something that Cory and I initially started. We worked hard at the beginning. Cory was very collaborative in getting first a test school to work on it, the fifth grade at La Tetra. And from that, every school district, every school chose to participate. Students first learned how a government runs in the classroom. They elected their own mayor, a mayor pro tem, et cetera. They had topics that they had to discuss in the, as the city council. One of them was what to do with ficus trees because they are very problematic, as everybody knows. Everybody loves them. They're beautiful. They look great at Christmas, and they are so messy, and they lift up the sidewalk. So the students had to talk about that. The other one was, should we have a, pardon me, dog park at Finkbinder Park? And so they had to work together. They, they appointed their city staff. So they had to choose the city manager, a city attorney, department heads to discuss the situation, just as it was discussed here tonight. And then they listened to public comments. Some of the students were in favor of whatever was being discussed. Some of them weren't. And then at the end, they took a vote to decide what the city should do. And they, they remembered that. I've talked to kids that are, were in high school or even adults after that, being in that fifth grade program. And it really impacted them forever. So I'm asking that that be reinstated. It was stopped during COVID. And it hasn't been restarted, instated yet, but I think it's so important and really urge both the school district and the city to consider reinstating that program. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we get to hear from Glendora National Little League, Eli.
All right. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name's Eli Conamu. I am a resident here in Glendora. I am president of Glendora National Little League, and I'm the father of three boys all in Glendora Unified School District. I think one of the most important issues, one of the most important concepts we've been talking about tonight is collaboration. And that is something that I came here specifically to discuss. And I wanted to wait until the second part to be able to hear what everybody had to say, so that I kind of knew how to, how to tail this comment. I had the unfortunate pleasure of taking over Glendora National Little League in two thousand twenty, right before it was closed for COVID. And I very much respect the work that Mr. Lopez had to do because I started going through city council minutes to try to find a land use agreement for Sandberg Middle School. And when I found the two thousand agreement, I came upon the very troubling realization that we weren't on it. And neither was Glendora American for Goddard. And every single person that I talked to on our boards, every single parent, everybody assumed that we had free rein to use these fields. They were our fields, which could not have been further from the truth. And we, we've been talking about, I think Mr. Raymond used the analogy of mom and dad talking. What this has relegated us to is, we're the kids. You know, you guys are mom and dad, but we're the kids. And Ms. Bakar has basically become my gatekeeper, and I feel very sorry for the ten thousand emails that I've had to send to her, basically asking to do anything. Can I do this? Can we do this? Can we do this? Can we do this? And, you know, she has to answer me, yes, no, and that's her unfortunate responsibility. But that's not a collaboration. That's delegation. And what I want to propose, I mean, what I want to urge, you know, coming short of just straight demanding, is that we as stakeholders, Glendora National Little League, Glendora American Little League, soccer, everybody, should be a part directly of this conversation to make a land use agreement. We should have a say in these terms. We should, we're, we're the ones that know our league. We're the ones that know our sport. We're the ones that know these fields. We shouldn't be some part of a nebulous third party out here that's being dictated to, that has terms that are laid before us going, here you go. This is the agreement. That's, that's not an agreement. That's a delegation. So I would very much urge that we be allowed to be a part of these conversations. We're talking about two-on-two meetings. I don't know what those are, but you know, we should be part of these meetings. We should be the ones that are signing off on these agreements as well. We are, I mean, between Glendora American and Glendora National, we have over seven hundred kids, that's seven hundred Glendora families that we represent. And I think their interests need to be directly part of any kind of negotiated land use agreement. So thank you, guys. I really appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak that hasn't filled out a speaker card yet? And do we have anyone on Zoom that is using the raise hand icon?
At this time, I'd like to invite Nicole Bliss to give her comments. I'm going to send you a request to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
It's great television right now.
There's watching at home. You have the wizard behind the curtain. Great morning in the back. He's trying to help us.
Great. We all started counting for you and cheered when you were done.
Okay, can you hear me now?
The joys of in-person and virtual meetings.
Can you hear me now?
Nicole, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. I'm getting message that other people can hear me.
Ask her again, Kathleen.
Nicole, can you?
I'm here. Hello?
Have her, please.
Nicole, I'm here.
Can you?
Turn the mic on, Kathleen. Turn your mic on.
Did that work?
Nicole, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes. I think people on their phones can hear me.
Okay, Nicole, we got you.
Oh, yay. Okay. Hi, you can hear me good now?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. I was reading the draft that was attached to the agenda, and I'm a little concerned with the fee. I'm concerned that the fee is not going to help maintain the field to the level of safety that they need to be maintained. I have been on Glendora National Little League's board. I have helped coach soccer. I have helped all over the place. And there was at least one occasion when I was a coach at Glendora Youth Soccer. Now, this is many years ago. Where me and the other coach had to decide not to play the game at Whitcomb High School because the field was not safe. There was holes, the grass was too long, and we had little eight-year-olds who were going to fall and break their ankles. Now, to contrast that with Glendora National, I know the level that they keep their fields maintained because we spend a lot of time and a lot of money as a board, making sure that those fields are ready and safe to be played on. So to be told consistently as a league that you can't do something because it's a liability is a little laughable. When the city and the district do not maintain things to a level of safety, that lowers the liability that they are concerned with. So as these decisions are being made, I ask that there be a way for the leagues to hold the city and district accountable, to make sure that these things are up to a standard that our students and players deserve. Otherwise, give them the leeway to get the donations and spend the money to maintain them better than the city and the district are currently maintaining them. Thank you, and sorry about the difficulties earlier.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time?
No other requests have been received. Thank you.
Okay, with that, then I will close the public comment time and bring it back to the council and the school board. For questions, comments, or possible motion. Mr. Thompson.
Page all of them to potentially look at agreements and/or other methods in which they are brought to the table.
Again, how would you propose to bring them in? You're gonna have some sort of meeting just for them?
So. Serving as the baseline, which, which was talked about early this evening, which was not extended at the first part of 2018.
So as was mentioned earlier, is what's, what's the timeframe of trying to get this done, as you mentioned, because you have other things to do? What's the goal?
Well, the goal was two years ago. I, I know for the mayor pro tem, it was seven years ago. You know, our first quarterly update, when we come back to council and to the school board, if this is appropriate, we'd be happy to bring forward you a more detailed timeline of the various events and milestones moving forward. We've put a lot of work into coming to this point. It was delayed by COVID and other events. We've had changes at administrations and staff level. And so we're really hoping that this public and those in the audience, and you, you can watch this online and hold us all accountable. So I would love to say six months, but I'm sure we're probably a little bit longer, but we are setting aside money currently at the city. And it sounds like Tracy is as well at the school district level to ensure that there's adequate funding. As the speaker said earlier, it's right, you know, we have delayed and delayed necessary capital improvements. And what once started as a small leak in our roof has now turned into a foundation issue in a lot of the sports fields that our youth and adults use. And it's going to require a, a lot of significant comprehensive investment in order to bring them back. And this is not going to be a quick process, but ultimately those sports even in the public definitely should hold the school district and city responsible for providing those facilities which meet their standards.
So to put it in perspective, six months to a year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Thank you. So if I may, on the school district side, Dr. DeGrazia, I'll make a motion that the school board direct you to proceed in this manner, consistent with this framework that we've discussed tonight. With the input that you've heard from the board members and the council members to draft a proposed master joint use agreement to be brought back to the board at a future date, to consider the details of it. Please do so with affirmative language that obligates the school district to pay their fair share of city resources. So long as the city is obligated with affirmative language to pay their fair share of school district resources. And of course, please have all of our, our partners in this, especially the sports leagues and the school activity sports groups, part of Glendora Unified folks as well, at the table in drafting that. So what comes to us is hopefully comprehensive and close. I don't know if there's a second on the board.
That was a very long motion. Thank you, Mr. Ellison.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Borg. Are there any questions for Mr. Ellison? Okay, all in favor? Motion pass five zero.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Boyer?
If I could, I think it's important your, question was asked about direction. There's no clear direction. Well, that's the point of tonight is trying to give direction for the experts in this to be able to come back with a much more detailed proposal at, at a future time. A couple of things I'd like to make sure that were mentioned by the public that weren't discussed here is number one, the, the issue we've talked about sports leagues. Well, there's more groups than just the sports leagues. The, the group, the cheer group came up tonight. I, I don't know if there's other people that may be using tracks, but I think we need to make sure that we include in this collaborative effort to do community outreach so that others can be part of this conversation as well. If, if they're not part of a, a current organized league. The other question, Judy, you brought up the idea of Yes City Gov. You know, I love that program, but I don't think that is part of what we're doing here tonight. I don't think that needs to be part of this. That's a program that is more in tune for the city council to work with the school board to try to work that. And we did have a nonprofit in town that was funding part of that. So it's an important program and, and we will get that back on track. I'm, I'm sure with the cooperation of the school board, we'll get that back on track, but I don't think that's part of what we're looking at here tonight. And then the, uh, other thing, a comment was made about some sort of city grants that were given to the youth leagues prior to nineteen, or to 2012. And I've never heard that before. And from my interaction with the sport leagues, John, you, you know about it?
That used to be in my budget. We used to have about $50,000. And when we ran the youth sports council, they could apply and go through either our CIP project or through the, the school district to get approval. They put in scoreboards, bleachers and that, and it would help them. But as budgets cuts, that was one of our first cuts that we made to our budget back 20 years ago or 10 years ago. And it hasn't come back.
Okay.
But that would be something that it helped all the leagues do capital improvements to all their facilities.
Yeah, because they got the volunteer effort there, but as far as the funding, that could be helpful. So I think that would be part to be part of this conversation as well. As you dig into it, try to figure out how that worked and, and see if there's ways that we can be collaborative on that. But for that, that's the direction that, that I think that we're talking about tonight. These guys, you know, worked very hard at trying to make something like this happen. And our job, along with the residents of Glendora, is to make sure and point them in the right direction, what's going to work for everybody. So that's what we tried to accomplish here tonight. Now, the next steps, this is going to be the first of many meetings, I'm sure. And, you know, we'll be coming back. We'll probably have a number of drafts of, of this agreement long before we're ready to actually adopt an agreement. So as long as you guys have enough information, it sounds like the district does, then, then I think the, the appropriate motion, I'll leave that up to, to one of you guys if you're ready for that.
My, my suggestion, my suggestion, members of the council, is that you adopt the city council or the school district motion as your own with the additional direction that was just provided by the mayor pro tem. And that direction is towards cities.
Are you moving that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Second.
Still moved.
Been moved and been seconded? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose? All right, that passes. All right, very good. Seeing nothing further, then I will adjourn this meeting at 8:37 and turn it over to you.
And I concur with that adjournment.
All right. Thank you again to everyone who participated via Zoom and in-person.